Okay, we will call to order our Brainerd Planning Commission meeting. It is Wednesday, November 15th, 2023. Would you please call the roll?
Duval.
President.
Gorham.
Here.
Grunewald.
Here.
Marone. Norwood.
Here.
Stengline.
Here.
Jaeger.
Yes, item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. All right, item number four is approval or modification of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a couple of seconds, but I'll give this one to Mr. Don here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, it looks like we have an agenda. The first item on that agenda is approval of the minutes. That is item 5A, the draft minutes from October 18th.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? There are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, and we have some minutes. We'll move right on to 6A. This is our unfinished business. This is a consideration of a short-term rental ordinance. We will be holding a public hearing. But first, we're going to have Mr. Kramvik kind of give us the rundown on this. This is page five in your packet. Please, James.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So staff will provide kind of a brief summary of what the ordinance contains, as well as some of the changes that were made as a result of the review from the last planning commission meeting. So some of the main items of this proposed ordinance is that it would separate short-term rentals into three categories. The typical category that you see short-term rentals now would be called a VDU, Vacation Dwelling Unit, which allows unlimited number of stays at that unit. This proposed ordinance would cap that number to 20 in the city of Brainerd, as well as allowing only 10 in the traditional neighborhood zoning districts and 10 in the contemporary neighborhood zoning districts. In addition to that, the ordinance would also limit one VDU per property owner or company, would also limit one VDU per multifamily building. So with that, I'll go into some of the changes that were proposed at the last planning commission meeting after planning commission was able to review the proposed ordinance. So took a look at the accessory home share, as well as the accessory vacation dwelling unit. This is where the property owner resides. We added the word homestead to it, which was recommended by the planning commission. Also, there is a lot of discussion on property managers, owners, and where they'd have to reside in order, if there was an emergency or something had to be taken care of at the vacation dwelling unit. Planning Commission recommended from the last meeting that it would be in line with essentially what the rental code states, which requires them to be within 50 miles of the property. Left out the word "emergency contact" from it, and it really should be a property manager or a relation to the property owner and not an emergency contact. So that was added language to the ordinance. Also, Planning Commission recommended extending the date to December 31st, 2024, in which all rental, short-term rentals operating prior to the effective date would have to abide by these standards. And lastly, there's a number of, I guess, procedures for a waiting list on here. Staff did add that it will be posted to the city of Brainerd website for that order of waiting list in the event that the number of VDU's has maxed out at 20 or 10 in a specific zoning district. With that, I can certainly answer any questions of the planning commission.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Kramvik. So first, we'll have a little time here for anybody who has any questions for James on what we've got presented back in front of us here. And then we will be conducting a open hearing here for anyone who would like to speak on this matter. But first, any questions for James? We certainly can do that as well. Did everyone get a chance to read the letter? If, yes, okay. So we can certainly discuss the letter as well. I was thinking perhaps we would go through the public hearing, ask James, go through the public hearing, bring it back to us for discussion, talk through the letter, and then open it up for anything further from there. So, any questions for James? No, no questions for James. Okay, so at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open the hearing. If you are in the gallery here and would like to speak on this matter, it's really simple, just come on up and let us know who you are and where you live, and we'll give you some time to let us hear what you would like for us to hear. And I'll have you probably remain up here, just in case any of us have any questions for you, but it's very simple, easy process here. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:05 and invite anybody up who would like to speak on the matter before us, that would like to, if anyone would like to. Please, come on up, thank you.
Thanks. Hi, Rick Bedeau. I think I own half of the Airbnbs in town. And so I think the letter, my else, will be referring a letter that I sent. I assume that's what we're discussing. I don't have a whole lot to say. I put a lot of it into the letter. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have on to kind of our business model and how we go about it. Completely supportive of regulations and the need to protect housing and making sure that people have affordable housing. We do use a slightly different business model than I've run into. Every property that we own is long-term plus a STR, or I think you guys are calling it vacation rental units now. We actually do that in the city of Brainerd and up north, Finland, Minnesota. I don't know if you guys know that location. So this is our business model, this is the way that we approach it. And it has allowed us to open up housing for individuals. In Finland, for example, we have refurbished two units back to life that are long-term rentals for people, and we're actually, with the money, are going to be looking at building three more up there. Most of our units use Airbnb funds to support the long-term rental. Frankly, it is, there is a lot more money in the Airbnb market, but we're not trying to flood the market with Airbnb units. My primary concern here, besides the fact, obviously, there is a financial consideration for us, I'm not going to pretend that there's not. We did work really hard to get this building, the quad on Sixth Street, Sixth Ave, cleaned up, get rid of some of the crime that was occurring in that building, make it more suitable for the tenants that are in that building. This decision would roll that back. We would have to get out of the Airbnb space, which would potentially put us back into a situation that I don't think the tenants would want. We've received very positive feedback from our tenants as far as that this has made life better for them. And so that's at least part of my concern there, is that particular situation. I don't know what my request is. I think regulations are needed. Consideration for grandfathering in would solve a lot of this issue. I would say that we potentially would have continued with this business model in Brainerd, which would be, again, Airbnbs in part of the building, long-term in other parts, fixing up buildings. We are in a position to make those moves financially. I think it is fair to say that we would probably cease that activity in the Brainerd area if this were to go into play and just rely on the two buildings that we currently have. I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bedeau. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bedeau while we got him? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bedeau for being here in person. You know, I get the need to try and recover your investment from some major renovations that are not cheap, especially when we're dealing with old buildings. There's a lot, a lot to make up, old electrical to modern, so on and so forth. And, you know, for your business model, do you have a feel as to how long it would reasonably take for you to be able to kind of recover enough of your investment in those repairs in order to be in, turn it over to long-term rental? You kind of understand the nature?
I do, yeah. I mean, so the simplest answer to that is we've put $30,000 into that building. So, a period of time. It's not a 10-year to get our money back there. I don't think that that would be fair. It's definitely longer than one year to get our funds back from that perspective.
But you could amortize some of that through a long-term rental as well.
It's a good point.
You know, it's not trying to get all $30,000, for example, as a discussion number, but...
Yeah, that's fair. You'd get about half back, right? So I think, the way I look at Airbnb is it's 2X to 3X. So you're making 3X the money with the Airbnb. You'd probably, we could probably claw back half. More if you raise the rent. Again, that building has not had rents raised ever since we took it over. So there is opportunity there. I'm not interested in doing that. I don't need 200 extra bucks from the little old lady. So there are ways to get the money back, but not, probably methods I wouldn't want to necessarily use.
Thank you, Mr. Bedeau, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Grunewald?
I just, the question I had was, the long-term renters that you have in the properties, are they, obviously, they're not within the VDU, but they're longer term. So when you buy the property, obviously, you have to fix the property up. And is that, at that time, you set it up as Airbnb? Or you go right into a, or you go right into a rent?
In this scenario, when a unit emptied, we then remodel for Airbnb. No one has been removed for the property for the purpose of Airbnb. So when we bought the unit, the plan was for four units, long-term rental. But as soon as one opened up, we made the swap, I think. And then we worked with the city, which, I have to say, by the way, Brainerd is an extremely fair city to work with, and I do appreciate that. We worked with the city to, I think we did some rezoning potentially. And then I think we worked with them to get the second unit available for the Airbnb rental because people had moved out. To be fair, I'll be candid, the one wasn't paying her rent. So for, I want to say, we let her live there for eight months without paying us. We're a very, I don't know, you could call that slow, I suppose, fair about trying to treat people well, but once she was gone, then we did switch to an Airbnb.
Thank you.
Like it's a little bit different from what we're trying to do. It seems like you fix it up, Airbnb for a little bit, and then long-term rental. So I'm just, we don't want to displace anyone by any means. And I support what you're doing and in favor of grandfathering, whatever.
I appreciate that. I'm not aware of anyone using our business model. And we, you know, it's worked well for us.
Mr. Norwood?
Within the spectrum of the, how much percentage reasonably would you say that you end up subsidizing the long-term with the short-term rental? And I guess what I'm trying to get at is that, within a growth model, future potential, if you were going to continue, how much of the business would you end up using short-term rental to subsidize into long-term?
I'm not sure that I completely understand the question. Maybe I answer it like this. The unit that she's in, we're charging her $600 a month. I think it's probably an $850 unit. So we don't need to bring any of that rent up for that unit. Total money coming in from Airbnb is 50% of that building is Airbnb funds. The other one, the second building, which I'm less concerned about, because we would fit within, that's the one building, we'd be fine. That one is, more than 50% of my, of the money comes from the Airbnb units.
I guess what I'm saying is, if you had a 100-unit complex?
Yes.
50 of them would be utilized for the short-term. 50 of them would be the long-term, as to keep the long-term rental more economical?
That's a fair question. I don't, so I think we do what makes sense. I will say this, my take on the Brainerd market is that it's not Airbnb. Brainerd proper is not Airbnb-rich. Like, we're not looking to put more Airbnbs in town. I wouldn't turn the building into four. That wouldn't, our occupancy rates are already maybe 30 or 40%? Like, it's not this huge occupancy rate. So I don't believe that I would, we would flood the market with four units. Up north, like, the only, the best answer I can give you is, up north, we have one Airbnb, which is producing five long-term rentals. That's, that's, that's the model that we're using up there. If I were to think three or four years out from now, we would probably switch that to three and three. I think 50% is probably a good guess.
Any other questions? Mr. Bedeau? All right.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much. Anybody else? Please.
I can add a little bit, kind of to piggyback off what he's saying. I think he's a prime example...
Can I get your name and address, please?
Sorry, Mike Fish, 1533 180th and Peers, but I do have an office in Baxter. So I own PMI Minnesota, or, I'm sorry, you started PMI Minnesota like four or five years ago. My new brokerage is Minnesota Real Estate and Management. So I've developed about 50 short-term rentals, you know, over the last several years. I currently manage about 30 of them and one of them in Brainerd. And I will say, the one in Brainerd, we might even go back to long-term rental. So I guess what I'd like to say is two things. I don't think Brainerd is going to support more than 20, you know, 25 maybe. So I'm not worried about the cap, I think that was very fair. I was worried about the discussion of having to live within the city of Brainerd, you know, because we don't do that with short-term or long-term, so I don't think it should be done with short-term. But I'd really like to make the point that if, you know, short-term rental is done right, most of the issues or concerns people have just aren't there. Like, I've managed over 1,500 rentals, or 1,500 stays, you know, in the last several years and had not one complaint with the county. So there's a right way and a wrong way to do it. You know, if people are worried about the relationship with neighbors or the community, then I think it's best to put together our best practices packet, because of course you're going to have some people that are going to stretch it out and try and do the party houses and things like that. But I think it's much, much more rare than people think it is. But I will say, this, as somebody who managed about 30, 40 long-term rentals in Brainerd and have now done short-term rentals for several years, there is a lot more investment in the short-term rental than the long-term rental. Meaning that, you know, you're living off those reviews, right? You can't have any issues with those properties in any way, shape, or form. So I think you're going to find that anybody doing short-term rental in Brainerd is going to put a lot more into that property, and it's going to be in a lot better condition than your average long-term rental. I think the, the, any, the negatives are far outweighed by the positives in being open to short-term rental. And the money that's brought in by short-term rental taxes, et cetera, is, is way above any revenue from long-term rental. Like, my units were normally netting, depending on the property, and normally mostly it's lake homes, but we're netting, you know, 30 to 60 to 70,000 a year. And I would say the same thing, I set up in Breezy Point and Cross Lake, and they both kicked it back to the county. If you've got any issues, you know, that the city is carrying because of short-term rentals, I think it's much more fair to just raise the rate of taxes to compensate the city than try and limit them, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fish? All right, very good, thank you. Anyone else? All right, one last call for anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing here. And he nodded before, nobody is online, right? All right, very good. I guess if you are on the phone here and hoping to speak on this, we still have the, we still want them to use star 3? If you're listening in and you would like to speak on this issue, key in star 3, and that should indicate to us that you would like to speak. I'm not seeing anything. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:19 and bring this back to us for discussion. So, thank you to everyone who spoke.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Question for staff on, just a refresher, on how many interim use permits for short-term rentals we currently have issued in there? Is it nine?
It's going to be, I believe, six of them, six or seven in that number. There's a couple that were grandfathered in as well. We do have one more that will be at the next planning commission meeting.
But right now, ones that we've issued?
It's about six or seven.
Six or seven, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
James, of the six or seven, is the ownership concentrated with one or two people? Or is the ownership split among the six or seven, roughly?
Except for Mr. Bedeau's, which owns three of them. One of them was grandfathered in. The other ones are all just kind of single short-term rentals.
So three, then 1-1-1?
Yep.
Any other questions for James? All right, very good. Let's get some discussion going here about both what we see and what we've heard. We have the letter to refer to as well. We've had a couple, a couple people speak, and we have our revised ordinance here in front of us, so... Yes, please, oh, sorry.
It's okay, way down here on the end. I think that part of the rub, maybe I'll say, is that we are, we are trying to be forward-thinking with this and trying to look at this thing that we, currently, everything's okay right now, but we want to keep it that way. And we don't want to end up with something that we can't fix later or that is really hard to fix. I think we're still on the right track for that. I, I would be open to changing that date that's now, is it December 31st of 2024, to pushing it out to 2025 and having a little bit extra, you know, for the people who are already doing this, giving them some more time to figure out what works best for them. And giving us more time to, you know, maybe we'll decide that, maybe somebody will come in and suddenly they'll want to have way more short-term rentals, or maybe, maybe we'll realize that, no, well, that problem. The market for short-term rentals just collapses and it's not a problem anymore. So I guess I would like to hear, I'm not making a motion on that right now, but I'd like to hear other members' views on that, or any other ideas.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Stengline, I truly support that same logic. I think it, how do we, how do we, as reasonably as possible, transition an active market into a new regulatory structure? And I think that's one way to do it. I can appreciate the investments made to bring a property, an older property, up to current code standards and current expectations, if you would, of a 21st century home resident, right? And also, I appreciate Mr. Fish's comment that, some feedback that the 20 seems about like a reasonable number for the, that we could probably expect Brainerd to, to support, you know. You know, looking at the number of housing units in the city, it's somewhere around 6,700 housing units. Some of those are multifamily, so it's not 67 houses. But that's, that's about a third of a percent of our housing stock. It's about 48% of our housing stock is rental. So you're, still, you're about 2/3 of a percent that we would be working here. So trying to get tangible numbers, we've been discussing over the past couple of meetings on this, this ordinance, they're reasonable numbers. It's going to be sort of a low-level use. And so it's, it seems reasonable that we could push that out another year just to give the current permit, interim use permit holders a chance to kind of rethink their model, whether that means you transition over to long-term, or maybe you change your game plan and say, maybe I can get a good price on selling this improved property now. You know, so there are different ways, but giving them the chance to think about this without just forcing them within, you know, what I thought probably six months would have been good earlier, the discussion went to 12 months. That's reasonable, 24 months is still reasonable. So I would, I think I would support bumping that out a little further and being able to allow our market to, our current permit holders to adapt to a changing regulatory environment.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. Anyone else? Yeah, please, Don.
Would there be an advantage, and this is kind of Mr. Duval, an advantage of doing, of grandfathering the current group and then making the new group follow the tighter regulations? I'm just kind of, kind of play a couple different ideas here and see, see what you think.
Yeah, I, you know, just to react to that, I think we have sort of that grandfather clause in here under C14. All short-term rentals operating prior to the effective date of the ordinance shall come into compliance by December of next year. So what we would be saying is, we're going to bump you out to comply by 2025. So then you're going to, you're going to have to fall under the categories. In the meantime, there's six to seven in here. We're not pushing the 10 per traditional neighborhood or, or the 10 per contemporary neighborhood. So we're not bumping into anything yet. We could still take other applicants in and kind of position them in other constraints.
And then we'd be positioning them basically with, under the caps, correct? Okay, good. Then, okay, then this is making sense.
Is that consistent, Mr. Stengline, with your?
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, well, I'm going to just chime in here just a little bit, just to add a little different perspective. As you remember, I was not part of the original meeting when this came up, so my hat's in my hand here a little bit, as I mentioned before. I'm very lukewarm about this. What I will say is that it is still, my position is the same, is that fundamentally, I'm just against short-term rentals overall. Mostly because the work that I do in the HRA, the work in the comprehensive plan, we hear over and over and over again with outside services that we bring in to look at our city, we hear over and over again that what we need in the city of Brainerd is sustainable, long-term, affordable housing. This short-term housing is 100% counter to that mindset, 100%. It's 180 degrees off. I understand, and I understand, I hear the arguments that short-term rentals fuel economically a rebuilding process. It helps even keep rents down. But that is, in my opinion, a very myopic view of what's happening just for that one entity. If you keep the, if you remove any house from the long-term pool, you're increasing, you're decreasing the surplus and raising the demand on the other houses, which makes their prices go up. So as a landlord, I want as many short-term rentals as possible in the city of Brainerd, because I know that my long-term rental becomes more and more valuable and more and more profitable. But fundamentally, I believe that the short-term rentals are just counter to what we hear every day, and that is, is that people are looking for affordable, long-term, living within the city of Brainerd. So that's the one reason I'm generally against this. But the numbers are very modest, right? We're talking very small percentage here. So because of that, I'm very lukewarm and more than willing to go along with what we got cooking here. The other thing I'll say, though, about this is, we are dedicating a lot of time and effort and energy and city staff to these 20 short-term rentals, and this is going to come up again and again and again and again. Just the question that comes to my mind is, why? Why are, you know, why all of this, right? For just 20 units? So, that's my soapbox. Again, I'm not, I'm pretty lukewarm about it. I'm not heavily invested, you know, one way or another on this. But I just did want to get on the record for saying that this is very counter to even have 20, to against the mindset that we all have talked about so much over the past few years. And I will pass it along to anybody else who would like to make a motion, and I will happily comply either way.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Prior to a motion, I'd like to have some discussion around subpart D, the ownership limitations, municipal caps. It's just below what's on screen now. Item 3D. All short-term rentals applying for renewal will be given preference over new applicants and must have an approved interim use permit by city council prior to the expiration of their existing permit. This is a complex issue that we've been working through, and we talked about it several times, and I keep having additional insights on this. We don't want to beat this too much. However, I would ask the question of, would we want to just give a blanket renewal to existing... a blanket renewal to existing short-term rentals by virtue of having that, or do we want to have something a little bit more based on compliance and, and exemplary operation? And if I may pose questions of staff?
Absolutely, please.
Specifically to the rental code, James. In the rental code, there's, there's inspections and, and penalties and such for any violations relating to safety, fire alarms, general condition issues. So am I correct? There, within the rental license part, which would go with this interim use permit, you'd still need a rental license.
That's correct. And with short-term rentals, we do inspect those each year with the fire marshal as well. So there, there would be potentially inspection reports, you know, kind of to expand on, on your idea there with, with section D. I'm not so much sure there's preference that they automatically would get it, but maybe in the queue for, come renewal time, they'd get to potentially reapply for a revocation or denial from city council before the, somebody on the waiting list would come. And, you know, we could certainly show, you know, rental inspections or any other violations, zoning violations that have occurred at the property.
And, and in addition, if I may, Mr. Chair, within the rental code, there is a, a section relevant to problematic properties that have had a lot of calls to the police department, police department having to respond, and there's a, there's a procedure in there for correcting problematic properties, working with the police department to have a management plan to correct those actions. Am I summarizing that correctly?
Yep, that's correct.
So where you have a property that, a rental property, this is not specific to short-term, but all rental properties within the city, you must maintain certain standards of housing quality, and it cannot be a disturbance in the neighborhood. And so I'm, I'm wondering if we connect item D here in there that says, you know, something to the effect that all short-term rentals that are compliant with city code 425, the rental code, applying for renewal will be given preference. So that we're narrowing that down to say that we don't want to automatically reboot a problem property. That doesn't remove their rental license, but it takes them out of this subset of rentals. They'll have to, to still continue to work on the, the issues of, of condition or whatever results in the violation, or they have to work through their management plan. But to hold a potentially better performer on the sidelines while we, while we renew this problematic property troubles me a little bit, and I, and I think we want to, that would be a further incentive. I like Mr. Fisher's example of, it's almost like you're getting the, you're getting the, the four thumbs up, however we rate our, our Airbnb stay or whatever, you know, so that we're getting the good performers, and there's, there's further incentive for them to ensure that these are good performing properties. So I would be proposing that we, we insert something to that effect into that subparagraph 3D.
Any questions on what's being asked here?
Yeah, so just kind of thinking through that. Is, is it, say they have a zoning violation or rental violation on there, and they're up for renewal. Would they then get moved to the bottom of the list if there's a waiting order? Or, you know, would it be better for them to reapply and show all of the history on there with Planning Commission to make a recommendation, city council to potentially deny it? You know, that's kind of the question there. You know, where does that go if they, you know, and how bad is the infraction for them to move down? I think there's a lot of complexity to that.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Please.
So in there are timelines to have the violations addressed. So you may have 30 days or 60 days to resolve that issue. I would say that that's an active issue that's being worked on, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't withdraw their permit, their interim use permit, be the way I would think about it, from an administrative perspective. We wouldn't fit, we wouldn't give a new application out to somebody else either, or we wouldn't hand that permit. We'd let them run the timelines, to the point at which, you know, time, time's up, and you, you can continue to work on that, but we're freeing up a limited short-term rental permit to another application on the queue. Does that, does that?
It makes sense. So yeah, if they're, if they're, if they've reached their essentially notice of violation level, or, you know, potential in the rental misconduct on premise correction time, and they've exceeded that, haven't made the corrections, then essentially they wouldn't get preference for order of operations, I guess, for applying for an interim use permit.
I would not, I would not be recommending that you wait until the point where their permit, their rental license is to be revoked, because that's, we're, we're hanging on to something that we've got a poor performer, they're not meeting things such that you're, you're revoking a rental license. That's a very dramatic way down, or you're a long way down the path, but it's reasonable to replace fire alarms, and it's reasonable to repair siding, and it's reasonable, you know, that, you shouldn't be getting multiple violations to trigger a management plan with the police department. If you are, that's a problem property, and we don't want that, in, in my mind, we don't want that occupying this pool of limited resources. We want the good performers in there.
Okay, yeah, I think that would make sense.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please, Don.
Is this perhaps too subjective, or could we just say that behavior will be considered? Good, good behavior will be, you know, I'm trying to come up with something, or is it all too subjective? Or do you want to have like a point system, and you rank up too many points, but then we're making this way too complex?
You know, it's a little subjective, obviously. You know, with current staff, we'd be able to do that, and, you know, we've talked through it. Compliance kind of means compliance, and if they're out of compliance, then they would drop them. You know, 10 years down the road, how does that interpret? 20 years down the road, you know, is there going to be a different interpretation, or is it too subjective? I'm not sure. But, you know, from a staff perspective, we'd certainly be able to administer that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
Actually, the rental code, it is a scoring system, where you get so many points, you know, so you've got maybe this or that, you get a check on this. The siding's a little bit rough, but it's not, I'll give you a point or two there. It is a point, and the sum of those decides whether you're in violation overall or not.
That's interesting. So we have a point system?
We do have a point system in the rental code with those triggers, and when you, when you exceed a number of, if you accumulate too many points, you're, you're not, you've got issues to resolve.
Interesting. Thank you.
I'll kind of expand on that, yes. What happens with the point system is your property either fails or passes. And then if it passes, there's still, it could be some correction items to do, but it's not a failed property. Life safety things automatically are failures, and I think they have something like, somewhere in the range of five to 10 days, Mike might know a little better than me, to correct those life safety issues, and then they're given a little bit longer on those property maintenance issues. I want to say maybe 30 days to get those up to. But, you know, certainly we wouldn't want to see failing properties reapplying without, you know, getting their, their proper life safety checks in.
Understood. Do you have a grasp of where we're going with this?
I think so.
Okay. I'm glad you do. All right. Any other discussion, any other items through here?
Would you like a motion to change that date? I feel like there's.
The date and potentially item 3, 3D, right?
I think Mike might have both ready to go.
E3D. And just to the question of, I mean, with these changes, maybe questions to staff, with these changes, are we be able to advance this, this draft ordinance to city council this evening?
Yep, you could, as long as it's just those two, you know, two kind of minor changes there, and you can put that into the motion. It could be brought to the city council.
Yep. I might have a couple other edits then. On D, D dot two, changing that to four, no more than four, that would be 25% of the total amount that would be allowed within the city, going to one company or individual. And I might be the only one that's on this random tangent. The other edit that I was, another edit that I was considering is D dot three, changing A and B to two within a platted block. And then the final one would be edit of C three. That one's already taken care of. I think we are all in agreement on C three.
Got it. We want to have some discussion on four per owner versus one?
Mr. Chair, I'm not enthused about four. I, I too view that there is something, I, I understand the lure of the market, and I understand the niche it fills, but I do think we have to think in terms of long-term interest of the community, and I think four is too many. So I wouldn't, wouldn't be supportive of that. And the other changes, which increasing in the numbers, I, I think we put a lot of thought into coming up with the numbers we did, and I'd like to stick with those. That's my thoughts.
One on one.
Yep.
Okay. The reason for the proposal is the fact that there is no increase in the total amount allotted. It is only a, a change within, as to address some of the issue that is going on, as far as when we're talking about good renters versus, or good ownership in renting to good businesses versus bad businesses, we're broadening and asking for the opportunity for more individuals to potentially be good or bad, versus when you do find one good one rewarding for that, those ones that are successful and are playing the rules correctly.
I could, Mr. Chair, I can appreciate that, but then I still think we're incentivizing that of turning long-term rentals into, into, we're bringing it up to more players in the market, and I'm not wild about that. I like the limitations in space, because that spreads them out throughout the city, and it's going to avoid some clustering in certain areas, certain, maybe areas that are considered sort of valuable or whatnot, north side areas or whatnot. They would put, you'd have a couple of these close to each other. I like spreading them out.
Any other thoughts? Yeah, please.
I, I agree with Don's thinking on that. I think that while I acknowledge that this is a change for, well, for Rick Beddoe, and so, you know, I'm interested in trying to smooth that path. I think that if we didn't have any short-term rentals in the city of Brainerd right now, nobody had any, this is what I would want to have. And so it's about how do we get to here?
Any other thoughts on Mr. Norwoods? All right. Any other, anybody else have any, any potential revisions, addendums, revisions? If not, somebody more than welcome to take a crack at this.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, recommend approval of the proposed short-term rental ordinance with the following amendments. One, extending the date for short-term rentals operating prior to the effective date from December 31st, 2024, to be December 31st, 2025. And then that we add language to the short-term rentals for applying for renewal, that they must be compliant with the rental code and not have outstanding violations or under a management plan. And I might offer liberty to staff to kind of work that language a little bit more smoothly, but the intent being that.
Very good. Thank you.
That's my motion.
We have a motion?
I will second that.
And we have a second. Before we go to discussion, I just want to make sure, Mr. Kramvik, you have a grasp of what the motion is here, and have any obstacles?
Nope, that should work.
Very good, thank you. Do we have any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. There you go. Motion carries. Okay, very good. We will move on to, this is new business. This is item 7A. This is the consideration of a variance and a conditional use permit amendment for 1202 Sixth, South Sixth Street. Dylan is going to set us up on this. This is page 11 in your packet. Dylan, please.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, I would be curious where, where we're going with the ordinance at this point, the draft ordinance we just voted on. Where's that, where's that heading when?
James?
Most likely, it's not going to be the next city council meeting, because the packet's due tomorrow. We kind of wanted to see feedback for tonight, but if the packet does go out on Friday, I think there's an opportunity to still get it on there.
So potentially?
Maybe tomorrow.
Maybe, yeah, maybe for next Monday's city council meeting on the 20th. If the packet has to go out tomorrow, it may be moved to the next city council meeting and the first one in December.
So sometime, maybe in one week, maybe in three weeks.
Yep.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, Dylan, please, take it away.
All right. Here we have a request for variance at 1202 Sixth Street South for the principal structure. The variance is to exceed the 25% maximum allowance for metal siding on a structure in the TN2 district. The proposed principal structure would have 100% metal siding. Further, the applicant has proposed an amendment to the conditional use permit for an alteration of the site and landscape plan. So going through the facts, the applicant's proposal is 100% metal sided. The applicant was aware at the time of the initial application that this would be a requirement for building, and believed there would be no issue with compliance of the ordinance. After speaking with the manufacturer, the applicant became aware that affixing metal siding to the structure would void the warranty. Variances shall only be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance. The stated purpose of section 51542-d4a is that newly constructed buildings in the TN2 district, among others, zoning districts reflect the character of surrounding structures. The surrounding structures to this building are all sided in brick, vinyl, and other allowed materials under the cited ordinance. There are no other buildings with fully metal facades in the vicinity of the structure. The metal siding on the structure is different from the metal paneling traditionally used in industrial buildings, pole sheds, as there are no visible fasteners or ridges, which mainly that ordinance was, and section is meant to prevent more the pole shed steel siding for buildings. Variances are consistent with the comprehensive plan, economic development goal one, supporting infill and redevelopment throughout Brainerd as a component of growth, and policy one, driving infill and development slash redevelopment towards areas where current infrastructure is present. This was a redevelopment project, removing a blighted structure that was nearing condemnation. It also removed a blighted parking lot and used present infrastructure to install the ice and water vending machine. You can also note that this is in line with land use goal three, policy two. The ice distribution in the city of Brainerd has been an issue in past years, as one of the major suppliers stopped distributing in Brainerd, and the project would attract more activity on weekends around the downtown area. and the project would attract more activity on weekends around the downtown area not far away from it is located. Variances also may be granted when the applicant for the variance establishes that there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance. The process of siding this structure built for the purposes of creating and distributing ice could cause damage to the internal workings of the machine. This is not a cost-based practical difficulty. It is a difficulty in complying with the current design standards for a pre-manufactured building. Variances may be granted when the applicant establishes that there are practical difficulties. The plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the landowner. These circumstances are not unique to the property, but unique to the equipment allowed to be utilized on the property. And this is clearly not created by the landowner as this is a patent design ice machine operation used by the business. The variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. This variance will not substantially alter the character of the locality as the building has a small footprint, low visibility from the right-of-way once the landscaping is put into place. And it is also of metal paneling that is not typical of consistent or with industrial uses. In this case, the practical difficulties are not, again, cost-related and do not meet the economic considerations alone. The condition, the planning commission may impose conditions in granting of variances, but they must bear roughly proportional the impact created by the variance. At this time, I will move, do you want me to cover these here? Okay. These will be covered by James later. I will move on to noting the amendment to conditional use permit. Section 515-5-2.B dot 8 details the amendment process for conditional use permits and notes that any change involving structural alterations, enlargements, intensification of uses, not specified by the conditional use permit, shall require an amended conditional use permit and all procedures shall apply as if a new permit were being issued. The change as proposed by the applicant is a removal of the portion of the existing parking lot and the addition of landscape to provide an aesthetic enhancement to the site and integration of the property into the surrounding neighborhoods. This differs from the submitted plans, which include pavement over most of the premises. The amended plan would reduce the intensity of use at the property and add additional green space, not meeting the level of structural alterations, enlargements, or intensification of uses. An amended conditional use permit application shall be administered in a manner similar to that required for a new conditional use permit. Amended conditional use permit shall include requests for changes in conditions as otherwise described. Staff have attached the original findings of fact for reference that were approved by city council detailing. Staff detailed the amendment to the conditional use permit in the above paragraph that the applicant has provided for the new site. Our recommendations will now be discussed by our community development director, Mr. Kramvik.
Yes, thank you, Dylan. So just kind of in summary here, staff looked at this as uniqueness with this site, with this variance, kind of in three different areas. The first one is that this is a pretty small footprint compared to the other buildings. Added landscaping along the, along South Sixth Street will help also blend in kind of to the neighborhood as well. So compared to other buildings or potential other buildings that could be, you know, put in the area, this has a relatively small footprint. The other part of this is it's a pre-manufactured building, which is pretty unique. Typically, obviously, building construction along this street is going to be stick-built, put with siding. This being a pre-manufactured building makes this quite unique as well. And then lastly, the type of metal paneling being put on there, as Assistant Planner Edwards had stated. I know that the code specifically talks about metal siding. I do think that it was written in there more for the industrial-type pole buildings rather than, you know, maybe high-quality metal siding that you'd, you know, maybe see without any type of exposed fasteners or screws or anything like that. So I do think this is pretty unique and with the practical difficulty of having to screw into the machine to potentially damage any internal structures does present a practical difficulty in complying with the code. So with that, there are some conditions that staff is proposing to kind of minimize that impact of the variance. One of them is that the newly proposed area for landscaping shall require one shrub or two perennials to be planted for every five lineal feet and shall be two feet to four feet in height. And the property shall be required to plant three deciduous overstory trees in the newly proposed landscape area. And that staff must approve a final landscape plan before installation. So the landscape plan, if you can pull that up, Brent, that Mr. Sutton had provided, this is the revised landscape plan, adds quite a bit of landscaping in Birmingham to that northeast side of the property there. With that, I think because it's kind of exposed here and it's not pavement any longer, there was some consideration to re, just kind of revitalize the pavement that was there. But because it's new, I do believe using the landscape standards that we have for screening of parking lots would be beneficial to this area. Not fully screened, but it does kind of enhance the building. So two to four-foot-high shrubs and just having that spacing that we require within our parking lot standards. Also, because this doesn't quite meet it, there's, there are a lot of plants and trees in here, but that staff would just approve that final landscape plan before installation. Then the other one is there's a significant number of signs on the side. Mr. Sutton did do a calculation on percentage. Right now, 15% of signage is allowed kind of per side of the building. It's a little bit over right now, could remove some signs. But I think Mr. Sutton, and he is online to speak as well after this, is open to removing all the signs from the metal paneling because there is quite a number of signs there and then moving that to the top of the ice machine where the screening is of the mechanical features. So staff did put that as a condition as well, just to kind of soften, kind of soften the look of the site and how that relates to the variance. Also with that, with the condition, staff does recommend approval of the variance request as well as the amendment to the conditional use permit, and I can certainly answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kramvik. Does anyone have any questions for Dylan or James?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please, Don.
When I'm looking at a visit to the site on Saturday and was looking particularly at the back, from the back you see a large green box. Is that a utility box I'm looking at?
Yep, so that's a utility box that is going to be required to be screened. It's going to be completely fenced in.
How about the back of the building? The back of the building, because it kind of looks sort of less than attractive with the, with the box. You can't see it in this picture, but from behind, you can see where the utility boxes come up and there's just a piece of wood that just kind of everything's.
I believe that's going to be screened as well. So the whole backside of the utility side is going to be screened.
One more question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
And so when we initially approved this, when did we initially look at this? Can you help me out, was it last spring or earlier?
Seven months, six.
Yeah, probably June, somewhere in there.
Okay. Were, was it clear at that point that the building was going to fit into the definition of not having more than 25% metal siding? Was that, was that an assumption we're all assuming?
The applicant was aware that that would be a building requirement.
Okay. And then when did the applicant realize that this wasn't going to happen?
It was about, I wouldn't say a month and a half ago. As we were going through the escrow portion of things, spoke with the manufacturer and realized that the warranty would be voided if the siding was screwed in.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I personally don't have any issue with the building. I drive by there, you know, three, four times a day. It looks professional. That's kind of like the new trend in building. Starting to see some of that metal, flat metal siding out there, so. As stated, what you recommended for landscape and everything, I'm fine with all that.
Yeah, please.
And to be clear, at this point, this has not been operational?
It's been, there's been kind of a soft opening with it. Still has not received a certificate of occupancy, but has now provided the escrow for it. So there has been some operation to it. The building official did allow that, but an escrow has now been provided.
So there's been traffic in, it has sort of the design lighting is in place. Have we, have we heard any complaints about it at this point in time? Have you heard anything up to this point in time tonight as we go?
Have not heard any complaints. Somebody did call in, it would be from the, they live, would live on the west side. Spoke with Mr. Sutton and had no issues with the variance.
Thank you.
One more quick question. The storage shed you indicated on there, is that that garage that's kind of sitting at the back of the property? That's maybe seen better days?
Yep.
Okay. And a last question.
Yeah, please.
The last question is, did we have a landscape plan originally? Did we have a landscape plan when we approved this six or seven months ago?
Yeah, Brent, if you want to pull up the other plan? So here is the other plan. I think from the original thoughts that they'd be able to rehabilitate the parking lot, but it was in such bad repair that he ended up deciding to just put a new overlay onto it and take up all the asphalt, which created a lot more, I guess, area to landscape in that northeast corner there. So, you know, similar areas being screened there, but with additional landscaping and trees.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for staff? And do we have our applicant online here? If so, we'd like to open the hearing here and have him the ability to speak. So if we do have you online, star three, correct? Very good.
Yes, yes, I'm here, Mr. Yeager.
Very good, thank you.
Todd Sutton.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are we in public hearing now? I'm going to open the public hearing, right? Yep. Yep, I was making sure we had him first. So, so it sounds like we do have our applicant here, so I'm going to open the public hearing on this at 7:02 and invite you to bring anything forward to our attention that you'd like to have us hear. Mr. Sutton, please.
Yes.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay. This is Todd Sutton from Bibmark, North Dakota. So I just wanted to answer a couple of questions for Donald. And what we did is on the power box on these ice machines, the reason why they do the power on the back is because that wall is set up for that. And that, and that will all be screened in with a fence in the spring. So that'll all be covered with a white picket fence in the back.
Very good.
Just to answer you on that one, yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant here? Or I guess my question for the applicant, is there anything else that you would like for us to hear before we start going forward with questions towards you, to you, sir? Very nice, okay. Do we have any?
I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, very good. Anybody else with any other questions for the applicant? Yes, please.
One more.
Yes.
Mr. Sutton, is this your first ice machine that you, of this franchise? Is this number one for you or have you done others?
This is the first one I have been involved with, yes, in Minnesota. Yes.
First one in Minnesota, the first one overall?
Yes, overall.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? I have a question of, Mr. Sutton, please, if you'll indulge me. The part that I'm focusing in here is on part two B. And this says the applicant was aware at the time, the initial application, that this would be a requirement for the building and believed there would be no issues. Can you just give me an idea of how did this transpire? Was this discussed? Was it something that was in the fine print that you didn't really see? Tell me, just, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that you did know for sure that we had this ordinance regarding the siding and the metal and can you just, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that you did. We're aware of that, correct?
Yes, yes, Mr. Yeager.
Okay, very good. And then, but since then, you've contacted the manufacturer in questioning on whether or not the siding could be added, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And was the manufacturer taking and receiving calls at the time of the original application?
What they do, Mr. Yeager, I'll just elaborate on it, is they pre-build these. And so when you order them, I asked if we could do wood siding on there when they manufactured it. And they said they stopped doing those years ago because they had the moisture problem with the high tech and stuff. So they went to the sealed building to keep the ice cool and to keep the electronics that are inside, you know, from getting damp, moisture, or whatever. So that's why they went to the sealed building and insulated.
Understood. The call that you're talking about, that happened recently, like within the last month and a half? Or is this a call that happened way, just recently, right?
Correct, correct. The warranty and stuff was just recently, correct.
Understood. But just to be clear, they, easily a call could have been made at the time of the original application regarding warranty and attaching siding?
Yes, and that's when I asked them to do wood siding, was back nine months ago.
Okay. So at the time, nine months ago, they told you you could not do wood siding?
Wood siding, correct, correct. I couldn't build it out of wood siding, correct.
Okay, so just to be clear here, starting to put some pieces, I'm just trying to figure this out. So nine months ago, at the time of the original application, there was a discussion had that said you can't have all metal siding, you got to do something else. You called the manufacturer nine months ago, they said, nope, can't attach wood siding to this. Is that right?
No, no, not what, not attach it, build it out of wood. Build it out of wood. Not, not, not attach it, build it out of wood.
Understood, okay. So there was a conversation that said you would, you'd have to build a standalone structure, put the guts inside a stick frame structure, correct?
Yeah, I think I heard that right.
Here's where I'm going with this. I'm trying to understand the gap of knowing at the time of the original application that you couldn't have all metal siding to now, here we are, fast forward to just a month and a half ago, to this revelation somehow appearing that now, we now know or we are just now finding out that you can't have metal siding. That's, that's the gap I'm trying to close here. I believe that's the gap you were driving at, Mr. Gorman.
Right, 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 right. And I didn't check on the warranty until a month and a half ago. That's where the gap is. Right.
Understood. But there was no reason you couldn't have checked on the warranty at the time of the original application?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess, I guess you're right.
Okay, just want to make sure. Understood. I have no more questions. Any other questions for our applicant here?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Mr. Sutton, so if I understand the issue that would void your warranty on this, I presume fairly expensive ice machine, regards attaching directly to the machine. Am I understanding the, what voids the warranty? That if you drive a screw in to hold a, as a, or other fastener into that metal to modify the siding, that would void the warranty?
Yes, sir. Yes, Michael.
If you were to put a veneer on there, like a brick veneer would, would have a natural, would be on its own footer and it would, it would, it would, in some ways, anchored to the original structure with brick. But, but the point being, if, if it did not directly fasten to this machine, could you put a veneer around this in such a way that you would be compliant with the city ordinance?
Yes, you could look at something like that, but my biggest thing on that, Michael, was the expense of the veneer and/or brick, you know, and then the maintenance of that, you know, with brick and mortar or whatever you did there. So that, that was my biggest, biggest concern on that with expense and maintenance.
But, but that wouldn't be different from me having to do maintenance on my siding or on my brick house, would it? Wouldn't that be sort of just part of the maintenance of a, of a building?
Yep, yep, I get, I see what you're saying. Yep, yep. I mean, I, I did consider it. I mean, you know, but it was, it was the cost of that, you know? And, and it was just, you know, so. And I probably would still have to put, you know, if you did veneer because they're going up so high, you'd probably still have to put anchors in too. So that was a little bit of a concern as well. bit of a concern as well, you know? So, but, but you're correct. I mean, that, that has talked, I mean, I even visited with James on that at one point and, and so, yep.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
And, and just to remind you, the cost, cost alone is not a decisive factor in, in granting a variance, so I want to be clear that.
Right.
That the limitations here, if we can explore all the limitations, can you tell me a little bit about maybe other, 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 once you became aware that you can't physically attach to the structure, can you tell me what other ideas that you had explored to, to be able to, to comply with the, the conditional use permit that you were granted?
The first time?
Correct.
You're talking about, Michael?
Yep, yep.
Yes, well, I did explore it and there were so many different options, you know, with cement board, lap siding or whatever, but, but again, I did find a very last product that is, you know, and I, I brought it to James' attention, and it's LP four by eight or four by nine sheets. But then again, when you attach wood to metal, you gotta use deep screws, because I don't have any studs in there, you know, because it's a made unit, so it's so hard to get it to, you know, be airtight. And moisture does creep in, and that's when I brought that attention to the company, and they said, you gotta be careful with the warranty on that, you know, with the moisture and stuff, so. And that, that's where I was at with it. And that's why I did the escrow on that a month, because that was the alternative that we came to.
Okay, no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, anybody else would like to jump in and discuss this at all? Otherwise, I'm going to, no hands up, nobody else online, right? We're going to go ahead and close the, thank you, Mr. Sutton, we're going to go ahead and close the, the public hearing here. Sorry, yep, go ahead.
Oh, thank you for your guys' time, we really appreciate it.
Yep, no problem. We're going to close the, the hearing on this at 7:12. Bring it back to us for any questions for staff or any discussion here within. Yes, oh, sir, please, I gotta just.
It's okay, it's okay, it happens to Kelly too, all the time. So I'm, I'm really struggling with the, let me get the wording right on this, and of course, that just, now it locked, I have to verify on me. But the part where it is, this is not created by the landowner, that this situation is not created by the landowner, when it seems to me this is the definition of something that was created by the landowner. And so I'm wondering, is there a non-normal person definition of, because to me, the landowner bought this piece of equipment from a company and put it on this piece of land. This isn't like, I don't know, a force of nature created a gully or, you know, something like that, that, or, you know, there's swamp land naturally occurring there. This was purposely done by the landowner.
So we did look at that at two ways, as, you know, that, that potentially be an interpretation of that part of it. Because it was a, an ice machine, did go through kind of the conditional use permit process, and it's a pre-manufactured ice machine, I guess, that the owner didn't build. Staff looked at, at that perspective, but we certainly did consider, you know, that interpretation as well.
Any else? Yes, please, here.
Question, question to staff. Would, would the same, would the same siding conditions apply to an accessory structure? You know, it's, the, the code is saying building. Would it, would it also apply to an accessory structure? This, this seems like a pretty unique kind of a building in that it's not something that's occupied, it's not a, it's not a drive-up coffee shop where you, you get your cup of coffee at the, you order your coffee and then you drive up to the window and pay and receive. It, you know, it's a lot like just an ice machine outside of the Holiday Station or something that's sitting there, but it's a different size and it is the primary use on the structure or on the property. Would the siding stuff apply still to like an accessory structure?
It would, so the design standards would apply to all new structures on site. So if you were to build a new accessory structure, it'd have to apply to the same standards in the TN2 district.
Anyone else? Well, sure, Ben here, but I, I guess where I'm at with this is I just, I really dislike the, and this has happened a few times over the past few months, the, the, the mindset or the methodology or the, the, the approach to a project of, yep, we'll get our, get our permit here, we'll, we'll worry about some, something later, not, not, you know, not putting forth the due diligence to know. It sounds very clearly like the applicant knew that this was going to be a, this was going to be, this was going to come up at some point, and now here we've got the machine in and now it's back on us to, to, to bend some rules for somebody that just really, quite frankly, didn't do their, put their due diligence in and, and, and to make sure that they were going to be able to meet the conditions that we, of the original permit. So I really dislike that, that whole mindset of, of coming back after the fact. That's where I'm at on this and I guess if somebody would like to take a stab at this, we can pass this along to our, sorry, James, go ahead.
And, and just to remind you, there's kind of two things here. So there's the variance for the siding as well as an amendment to the conditional use for the site plan.
Correct. Yes, please.
Before we move for motions, maybe another question for staff along, I, I'm convinced that you can construct a veneer that does not attach, that's independent and does not attach. It might look like, or function more like a fence. But would that, if it were to return to the structure without fastening, would that satisfy, if, if you reduced it, the metal surface down to 25% or less, would that satisfy the intent of the design standard for commercial properties?
Yeah, so it would, it would essentially be flush with it?
Flush, or it may have to have a, a minor separation in there, I don't know, but I mean it.
A mi- yeah, a minor separation of a half inch or something is not going to be an issue. When I was thinking about this, originally, Mr. Sutton was talking about maybe a veneer, you know, three, three feet up around the entire thing and then some type of, other type of siding above that. And when he started talking about screwing into it, I'm, you know, I'm not a residential building contractor, I'm not sure if an anchor has to go in there to be able to support, you know, veneer that, or brick that's brought up that high. If, you know, if it doesn't, then I think that could be certainly a solution.
I, I'm not an engineer and I wouldn't be, be recommending, you know, specific solutions to the applicant, but I, I think that they could come back to you to discuss, doing some research and coming back to you with proposals that would be more along modifying the veneer, whether it's a, a three-quarter wall or something like that veneer that it can stand alone without being fastened, it may have to be glued maybe at the top with flashing or something, but, but if they could come back to you with that, that seems to me, particularly if, if that approach would get them compliant with their original conditional use permit, it seems to me the solution set there without, because it's going to be, I think, very difficult just from the tone of the conversation here, to find ourselves approving a variance under the circumstances that we're at. So how do we guide the applicant? Because it's, you know, again, they've made significant investments, we have a, a, a project that's nearly complete, it's already kind of getting the wheels kicked a little bit on it to see how it's running and how to, how to debug anything that's in it. So it's fairly advanced in the development process before now this issue comes back to us. So how do we, how do we give the applicant hope? That, you know, this may not be the right pathway, but they can get there, and that's kind of where I'm at. So if, 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 if the applicant has some avenues to pursue, that would further help us, because quite frankly, again, there are solutions out there, they may not be cheap, but that's, the, the criteria for approving a variance are very clear, that that alone can't be the driver here. And I think we can identify some options that could resolve this for the applicant.
And I certainly don't want to drive the applicant in a certain direction, but my mind is going towards applied graphics or adhesives on the, to apply the panels, but it's really not arm. Yeah, please.
The word that comes to my mind is scrim, you know, anything that would soften it. My question for James is if we table this, this sets a clock, right? We have to come back to it if we, if we table the motion? I'm just kind of looking at the mechanics that we could use tonight.
So if it's ta- we, we do need an answer within 60 days.
Okay, okay, all right.
There is a, there is an opportunity to extend the 60 days, but there has to be a reason. I guess the reason could, you know, be that we don't believe that, you know, he's exhausted all avenues to potentially comply with the ordinance. I do believe that, you know, that that would probably be reason enough to, to extend it another 60 days.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just maybe follow up to, to Commissioner Gorham. Do you believe that further information in 60 days would get us where we, we could approve a variance? Or are we just perpetuating a decision or postponing a decision that, that probably might be apparent this evening? And do you have some sense that something might come up to light that says a, a variance would apply here?
Are you asking me? I'm sorry.
I was, I think I was asking Commissioner Gorham. If you, if you were expecting, if you would expect that a new piece of information would come up, such that we could, we could either find that the hardship is a result of, the practical difficulty is a result of factors that not driven by the, the property owner or, or some other, something that tags all of the checks on, on, on the criteria we have to go through. I, I guess I'm skeptical that something new would come in that says, ah.
Right now, frankly, I'm looking at what's the advantage of denying versus the advantage of tabling? That's what I'm looking at right now and trying to see if there's an advantage in either which way. Either which way sends somebody back to the drawing board. Yes, this thing is on the ground, this thing is running. And that kind of, yeah, it just seems like we, like we haven't dotted the i's and crossed the t's here and we're already, it's already up and going. So that's, I, I don't see an advantage either which way. Either which way, I think it's back to the drawing board. So that, that's my response.
Also remember, this just will get passed along to our city council and they certainly have the ability to, to make, to render a decision independent of ours as well, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
I would make the motion to deny the variance request, and I don't see language up here per, I can't, I can't read, but I would deny the variance request before us this evening for this ice machine, automated ice machine.
Very good, and we can do this in one step, correct? With one motion here? We don't need to break it into two, correct? There, because the conditions are attached to the, the assumption that the, that the variance would, would pass?
So I, I'd probably do it in two motions at this point, maybe do the variance in one motion and then do the amendment to the conditional use in a separate motion.
Okay, got it. So this, this one will be on the variance first then, right? Is that correct, Mr. Duval?
Yes, that would be my, my, again, my, my motion is to deny the variance request.
Yep, got it.
I will second that.
I got a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion, please?
I won't be supporting the motion based upon what staff was recommending, but again, I'll go off on my own little rabbit trail.
Understood. Any other, any other discussion? Uh, I think we're going to do this one by voice, or excuse me, by roll call, please, James, if we could.
Duval.
So a vote for yes is to deny the variance, a vote for no is to not deny the variance.
Duval.
Yes.
Gorham?
Yes.
Grunewald?
No.
Norwood?
No.
Stangline?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes. Very good. Now we'll move on to the, the secondary portion of this. Just walk us through this back here one, one more time, James, just to make sure that we're, we're understanding what we're going to be making a second potential motion on.
Yeah, so slightly minor, but because there's a, a site plan change, staff did want to bring this back as an amendment to the conditional use permit. This actually adds more green space to the site and we provided kind of that, that findings within there as well. So it'll just be, staff is recommending an approval to amendment to the conditional use permit to add that additional green space and, and alter the site plan. It's up to Planning Commission if you'd like to put in some of the landscape standards in there, that was more for the variance to, to kind of screen some of and, and enhance it. It could certainly be added to the conditional use permit if, if, if Planning Commission seems necessary.
Understood, thank you. So basically, we're going from the first original landscape plan to the, to the, the change, the amended or revised landscape plan. Any questions for staff? Yes, please.
So if we, if we approve this or recommend approval of this and then it gets approved, how does that affect the, or how does, if the city council, who actually makes the decision, denies the variance, how does that impact this? I'm wondering if this would be something that could benefit from being tabled until that gets worked through.
So if, if city council would deny the variance and they'd say, say Planning Commission recommends approval of the conditional use permit amendment, he's able to just kind of proceed with the landscape plan that, you know, he sees fit there as long as it goes with, with our city ordinances. I did put a few extra stipulations in with the variance to maybe add even a little bit more landscaping. It's for our parking lot standards, now this is just surrounding the ice machine, it's not really surrounding the parking lot. So, you know, I, I think the city council could do that in, in one meeting.
I have a question. James, would it be fair to say that the additional items that were added in there were under the assumption that this was going to remain as an all-metal building?
Yep. If, if, if Planning Commission wanted to recommend it as an all-metal building, those are the conditions that, that staff was, was recommending.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
I, I like the revised or the amended landscape plan. And, and I would encourage the applicant to, to, you know, install that as, as amended. But to your point about, you know, it seems like this came as a package, this was a, this was a mitigation for, and I would, I would, I would, I would feel bad that we, we would pick one thing and not the other. To me, it looked like it was a package, it's just steps on a, in a process. I just encourage the applicant to, to, you know, to use this amended plan for their landscape plan for that site. I think it's very, it's, it's good.
Is there a mechanism of which, I'm just talking out loud here, is there a mechanism of which we could say that if the city council decides to approve the variance, these would then be attached? Is there, is there any, just brainstorming here, is there any motion we could make with the, with the secondary portion that would apply if the variance would hypothetically be granted by the city council? See where I'm going with this?
I think I could probably just mention that in the staff report and make sure that it's on the city council agenda part, that these were staff's recommendations if, if approved, something like that. But this, you know, it'd be separate versus what the Planning Commission had recommended. I'll, I'll figure out a way to convey that.
Okay. And you may be able to do that without a motion on this, right? Did you, you're going to pass that along that?
Yep, yep, but these are, I guess, the conditions that were discussed. You know, if, I guess if Planning Commission seemed like these were, you know, potentially good conditions, you know, if approved, you know, I, I could convey that in wording as well.
We're in a bit of a unique position here.
Chair, if, if I could introduce a motion?
Yeah.
And, and that motion would be that the, the, the commission encourages the applicant to implement the amended landscape plan presented tonight. to implement the amended landscape plan presented tonight.
Okay, yeah.
So we have a signal to the applicant. We've taken action on this issue, not to deny it. But here, we're, we're simply, it's almost a motion to support, motion of support and encouragement to implement the new plan.
Okay. All right, everyone heard the, the motion? Do we have a second?
I think James has a question.
Oh, sorry, James.
I, I think we should still have a, a recommendation on the conditional use permit. I think it'd probably be beneficial to, to Mr. Sutton because he has already put the, the asphalt in, that, that there, you know, potentially would be a recommended approval for the amendment. Otherwise, he'd act, you know, essentially, if it didn't get approved, he'd have to put asphalt in and go back to the other landscape plan that was approved previously.
Understood, so that's leaning us a different direction then, clearly.
Say that again, please.
So if the recommendation and city councils, you know, city council did not approve the conditional use permit amendment, he would have to actually add asphalt to the site and go back to the original plan that was approved from the original conditional use permit.
Could, could city council add a condition to the variance that would adopt the amended landscape plan as part of their decision-making if they were to approve the variance?
So I think the issue would be is if they don't approve it, this is still left open, still left, still left hanging, right?
And, yeah, and I think Mr. Sutton, you know, I don't want to speak for him, but he's planning on doing the landscaping here kind of, kind of no matter what, so is looking kind of for an, an approval for a conditional use permit amendment. You know, irregardless of whether the siding is done or not, he's looking to do landscaping in this area.
That makes it easy. Thank you.
That is different, if I just may follow up, that's different than the interpretation that it's a package deal. I mean, he's intent on landscaping as, as shown in the amended plan.
That's correct.
There we go. Now I'm good.
Okay. Do we have any motion by chance?
I would love to amend my motion.
Thank you.
Since it wasn't seconded, I'm going to throw that one out, and I'm going to, I'm going to recommend that we approve the amended landscaping plan to conditional use permit at 1202 Sixth Street.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a couple of seconds. All right, very good. Do we have any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Oh goodness, where are we?
If I may.
Yes, please.
Could I make just a summary comment here? I mean, at, we've heard at least three ideas on how to address the problem of meeting the side, the metal siding standard in the discussion here, and I would just encourage the, the applicant to look at those and additional ideas to be able to meet this without the need for a variance. So that, we're coming up with ideas, and I think there is a solution here that gets, gets the applicant to, to conform with the, the ordinance without the need for a variance.
Hundred percent agree, yes, thank you. All right, now we will move on to seven B, which is our Planning Commission itinerary update. This is, will be brought before, will be freshened before us by James. This is on page 22 in your packet. Please, James.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is just an update as we're working through these ordinances with Planning Commission. You see that the off-street parking one was crossed off, that was completed, that was approved by city council. The one that we're working on right now is short-term rentals, which was recommended today by Planning Commission to move forward to city council. So looking at the next steps of what staff should be working on. So staff has put as number three, which I guess would be the next one at this point, would be administrative subdivisions. So this is a pretty short section within our subdivision ordinance, but does come up quite often. So there's a lot of times where people want to combine parcels, split parcels, do boundary line adjustments. And the wording and language that we have within this just isn't real clear. We get a lot of questions from engineering companies, you know, it, it doesn't really even define boundary line adjustment and consolidation all that well compared to other ones that we've seen. And the other part that's, that's kind of odd, it doesn't, doesn't give like a time limit of when you could potentially reapply. So what, what you don't want with administrative subdivisions is somebody coming in with a large lot, you know, what administrative allows you right now to split two, well, you split, but then what stops you from coming back in a month later to potentially split again, which would be administrative? You don't want a plat, you know, and, and right now, it's just kind of an interpretation type thing that we do. If we know somebody's looking to do something large, we don't let them do that. But a lot of other ordinances will maybe put like a six-month or a year or even longer time period before you can, you know, do some type of administrative adjustment again before going through that actual planning process. So staff is recommending this one. I think this one could be pretty fast to go through. And then this winter, staff is recommending to look at our building design standards kind of in conjunction with the mixed-use development in the Commercial Corridor District. I know this is something that the EDAs already kind of looked at as an, interested in about potential mixed-use development in the Commercial Corridor District, which would be similar to the downtown where it's commercial on the bottom floor and then residential on, on the top floor. So, you know, kind of in conjunction in the winter, I think this one would be a little longer and potentially even a workshop involved with, with something like this. And then at the last city council meeting, it was brought up kind of towards the end, there's been some concerned citizens about cannabis dispensaries. So staff did put this one as number six right now in our itinerary. I don't believe, I think January 1st, 2025 is maybe the, the first time the dispensary is open, but I don't think that, or can open, but I don't think that's set in stone either. But it is something the city should begin to start looking at and how we zone it, where we zone it, you know, is it, is it conditional use? And staff will have to do some research to exactly see what ord, you know, what regulations we can put on it, and I don't even think that's fully clear yet. So staff has put that as number six. You know, that would probably be more like a, a spring of 2024 type project. And then ones that have been on here a little while would be solar arrays, which I think still would be important to look at at some point. I know Brainerd Public Utilities continues to look for potential other sites in and around Brainerd for solar fields as, trying to comply with some of the state regulations, kind of within the next 20 years here. And then manufactured home overlay district is one that we have on there, needs to eventually be, you know, kind of reevaluated, but, you know, probably not as pressing an issue as some of the other ones. And if Planning Commission has any thoughts on the order or like to potentially add a few things, we can certainly look at that as well.
Very good. Thank you, James. Does anyone have any thoughts on if we would like to potentially swap some of the ordering of these or add anything to our to-do list? Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I think, I think the cannabis is going to take some time, and I, I, I think, I think we might need as much time as we can get it on that. Spring is probably not unreasonable, but I'm going to bet we're going to go through a couple of public hearing processes there. We're going to get a lot of input on that. We're going to have to kind of work through that. We're, we're lacking probably a good model because this is all new. I'm sure that the, the Minnesota counties is, is working on this, and so there's a lot of stuff that's, that's, that's in the mill here, but I, I, I feel like that ought to pop up the list, the list a bit because it just feels to me that's going to be a bit of a gorilla. You know, administrative subdivisions, you feel that one's a quick one, James?
I do.
So we could, we could probably knock that one out, but I, but I think that cannabis one needs to come up the list a little bit.
Higher, you're saying?
Yeah, perhaps to, perhaps to four. See what you did there. I, I, I would feel that that might, might need to be up there pretty, pretty quick.
I don't disagree. Yes, please do.
I don't disagree either. The only thing that makes me think that maybe, maybe we can't put it higher is that it, you know, there, as Mr. Krampik said, we don't know all of the things that we need to know before we can do that. I don't know, will we have that information?
We could, we could maybe reevaluate this list again at, you know, if, if Planning Commission doesn't want to move forward with the subdivision ordinance, as we're kind of going through the public hearing process, process for that one, we can reevaluate maybe at that time to see if more information's come out from the state. That's kind of my concern on that one.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, please.
If we looked at what Baxter is doing, and specifically, I'm, I'm asking that because Baxter's already approved a medical dispensary for the, for RISE, and that would be basically right at the Baxter City Line. And so essentially, it's a dispensary in Brainerd is what it is. And so it makes me think that whatever we're doing, we need to probably pay some attention to Baxter because when Baxter approved that medical dispensary, it seemed like it was like no big deal. Committee said, yeah, city council said, okay, and boom, there they did it. And so I, 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 I think we need to be in sync with our neighbor on this one because there is no city line essentially there. It's, it's Braxton. And so, you know, whatever distinctions we want to draw, saying, oh, we're not going to do this, well, somebody about 40 feet away is going to do it, so. That's my thought on that. So maybe we could check and see if they have any, anything cooking over there.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure if they're going to view in the future medical dispensaries for, you know, different than, you know, kind of general dispensaries or not.
The RISE dispensary has made it clear that they're going to be a recreational dispensary.
Yep, that they do want to be a recreation. So, yeah, I'll contact Baxter and see what kind of work they've done on it.
But I would agree with Mike, that's probably something sooner than later.
Yep. So I'm hearing that we're going to keep administrative subdivisions as three, but we're going to move cannabis up the list to right after that, to at least start the discussion? There's nothing saying that we can't at least start the discussion on it and then table it until we get a little further information and, and then continue on to maybe something else like building design standards or something else, but any other?
Well, I guess we shouldn't confound the licensing aspects from the planned and orderly development aspects, you know, so the licensing stuff is, is another, and that's probably more complex. You know, the question about where we want to place these, what's this, this use in our zoning districts, in our allowable uses matrix, it seems to me that's less fraught with, with risk than, than the licensing things. How many are you going to license in your community? Da, 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 da. You know, I, I think this one is just really about the planned and orderly development, which is our, our, our principal task as the planning commission. So I would, I would think it's not going to be necessarily as difficult as some of the other things that city council's going to have to figure and staff are going to have to work their way through.
Yeah, so if I'm hearing you, we're going to, we're going to kind of sort out where they're going to go if they're allowed, or if they're brought into, brought into existence, we'll let our elected officials figure out the dynamics of how much and why and when and all that. And once you guys come to a decision, we'll have a spot for it. We'll be ready on that, right? Okay, very good. Yes, please.
So we do hold, I think it's at least twice a year, kind of a regional planning. We, kind of regional planners get together, usually somebody from the League of Minnesota comes in. I, I think we are going to put this on the itinerary of, of probably the next one that we're going to be doing. I did ask a question about it, you know, how, how can we regulate it? They did talk about kind of time and manner, that type of thing, and then obviously number within the city. I did ask a question, you know, where can we put this in with, you know, with our, say, table of uses and zoning districts? And the initial answer that I got from some, somebody that kind of represents the League of Minnesota cities did think that we should be able to do that. You have to allow it in a zoning district, you know, so you could be as restrictive potentially as allowing it as a conditional use in an industrial zone, or you could, you know, but it does have to be allowed. It, you know, within there, that's the initial feedback that I got, but we'll, we can certainly do some more research on that.
All right, perfect, thank you.
James, I think you meant to tell us when that is.
The, the next regional meeting?
Yeah.
The, the next regional meeting, we, we just went to one about a month ago, so I'm thinking it's probably going to be spring.
Okay.
Yep.
There it is again.
Yep. Yes, exactly. Okay, very good. You have what you need? Any other thoughts on this, on our list, to-do list? Okay, very good. We're going to move on now. Thank you very much, James, for that. We're going to move on to the, the exciting portion of our evening broadcast, and that is the much anticipated public forum. And so I'm going to open the public forum at 7:44. Anyone who would like to come forward, or if we have anyone online, this is your time to have yourself be heard by my esteemed colleagues. Do we have anyone that would like to come forward? Anybody, anybody online? All right, going once, going twice, and I'm going to go ahead and close the forum at the same time, 7:44, and we'll move on to staff reports. Dylan, please, have anything?
Besides attending recently that local group of planning officials and discussing, among other things, cannabis legislation at the state level, I, as assistant planner, do not have any other discussions.
All right, very good, thank you, Dylan. James?
Yeah, just a few things to update the planning commission on some, I guess, some of the other tasks that we're working on right now, more maybe on the council side of things. So right now, we're, we're reviewing all the fees within the city of Brainerd, looking to kind of get them comprehensively put together. After that, I think we'll be working on a couple of other ordinances also within the city, potentially revising our tree ordinance also. So we've done a, an entire mapping of the city of Brainerd, shows all where our public trees are, sizes, condition, so in the right of ways, the parks, and we're looking at putting some type of EAB management aspect into that as well. So us in the community development department will be working on tree ordinance as well as kind of updating our tree policy. And then the other one that we're looking at, we just started, you know, kind of researching a little bit, is some of our vacant buildings, vacant residential buildings within the city of Brainerd. Dylan and myself were able to kind of meet with, with people from Minneapolis to see, you know, kind of how they handle it. You know, there's a lot of instances, somebody might pass away and have no next of kin or anything like that, and, and some of these buildings will sit there for, for three years. So that's another thing that, that our department's going to be working on to hopefully figure something out to get these houses rehabilitated. So, yeah, that's everything.
All right, thanks, James. Got anything, Brent? All right, anybody else? All right. We're going to move to our next last item, this is commissioner member reports. I can stop. Tiffany, you have anything?
Nope.
Got you. James? I have nothing. Anybody?
Quick question for James about the trees. Is that something that's going to be shared with us or something that, that just happens right to the city council?
Um, the, the tree ordinance is part of the city code, so that typically, I would just go to city council on that one.
And for whatever it's worth, I would be, I would love to see the information about it, if you could just informationally, if nothing else, because I, I think that's something we really miss in this community. When we did like our walking tour along, was it Kingwood Street a few years ago, it was so noticeable, the character differences where the boulevard trees were gone. It, it had, it had an open feel. I swear cars drove, drove faster, and the areas where there was a good canopy, it just had a better feel. I just think trees are something we can do a better job of. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Grunewald? All right. Mr. Duval?
Well, I'd like to just update folks on a project that we dealt with a few years ago. The two-phase development by my lover, my neighbor-to-love coalition, and so they've begun their phase-two land-clearing operations. And if you may recall, for those of us that were on the commission at the time, the applicant had committed to making an effort to save some of the mature trees along Second, Northwest Second Street, and, and unfortunately, from that effort really was minimal. Matter of fact, it was non-existent. All those trees are now gone, and, and so what I presume after the site is graded will be down to the very minimalistic parking lot standard vegetation plantings that will be small and, and will take a while to grow up. And to the point of the, the boulevard trees, you know, the neighboring properties have, you know, 70 or 80-year-old trees there, so you've got a nice built-out, nice canopy, the shade, the character that that makes, and now you've, you've actually removed all that now from this development. So it seems, it seems a shame. It seems a little bit contrary to what the impression I think that we were given by the applicant, that they would make an effort. And so it, that's, that's where we are in that particular development, but know that that next phase is going in, which will provide a considerable amount of housing. I feel a little betrayed here, and I've been, I think, a, a good advocate for that residential use on that property rather than other uses that have been proposed, and I, I feel a little bit like this is a kind of a, a slap as to where we were trying to get with the residential development.